All right, it is six oh one, I will call the Township Planning Commission meeting December seventeenth to order. First we will have roll call. Dave, by him here. Jesse, here. Doug, here. Lee, here. Casey?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
And John is not here. We have an agenda for tonight, anything that we need to add or change for that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next we have the approval of the minutes from the November fourth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes, and then also the resolution for SU twenty four dash zero seven.
Correction on the resolution, the dates of the public hearings needs to be changed from thirty eighth of July to the twenty sixth day of November.
Like to make a motion?
Motion to approve November fourth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes and resolution SU twenty four dash zero seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next we are up to public comment.
Kevin should have abstained, he wasn't here.
To public comment, six oh three, I will open that up. That is for anything that's not on the agenda for tonight, so we'll have nothing down further, but I'll open that up at six oh three for the public comment. Have a lot of public here. We have further business here, so I will go ahead and close the public comment at six oh three. All right, we do not have any items for public hearing tonight. We do have the township board meeting notes, planning and zoning report for November, and then just the scheduled dates for the meetings for the planning commission are here, so just take a look at those and pretty much the format of the last Tuesday of the month except for a brother, so just please make note of those. We have no unfinished business. We will move into new business. We have SPR twenty four dash eighteen, the twenty eight eighty nine industrial parkway for Dale Street service. I see Dale is here. Dale, if you want to kind of step forward and give us a rundown of what you're looking to do.
I'm just looking to put a storage building up for my equipment. I would probably actually put a little bit there, but not even one bathroom, and that's about it.
All right, any questions anyone has for, same as the other building?
What's building?
I think, did you have representative here last month?
No.
I'm confusing you with someone else.
Brian. He's built in September.
They're all in September.
Sorry.
And I don't know if you and Christie thought you guys had, I did stop for the meeting today this morning regarding the first, I seen some stuff now with the person property taxes.
Yes.
My issue with it, why, with mine is when I was on Hope Road there, you know, the township took me to court and told me to seize my business, they shut me down, and then they still was trying to charge me personal property tax for having my business at that address. Talked to her, I came in in two thousand fifteen, I filled out my exact form, I paid the person property taxes, what was in every year, and they, like I said, I was taking to court, my business was shut down, kicked out of there. At that point, you know, I just quit replying until I came down here, it was like, you know, just a flight back and forth, and so I just kind of quit replying, and that's all.
Okay, since, since I'm applying for that, if you spoke to Christie and--
Yes, I talked to her this morning.
Okay.
Don't you guys--
No, I just, I was reading the paper when Lauren sent it to me, I was saying, I was like, oh, they got me.
Well, as you can see, I'm always, you know, my property taxes and everything for the township, you know, I still own a property there, it's current time.
If you worked out, that's all we have, that's not anything in our jurisdiction.
Well, I just kind of wanted to, you know, kind of look like I was just kind of a, you know, a paper bill kind of guy, kind of a guy that, you know, wanted your township kind of, you know. You know, that's, that's just one of those things that kind of comes with the paperwork, it comes with these things. I mean, that, you know, back in two thousand fifteen, you guys had a different treasure, a lot of people around here, then it was just, it wasn't, we ended up seeing a high for some reason, you know, it was like, why, why paper on a house if you didn't live-- being taken out of court and kicked out of the township and expected to still pay personal property tax on the businesses, not allowed to be there.
Any questions?
When we said they can gather, we were operating at, or?
Yeah, I did have my equipment at the Hope Road address there, they first came, personal property tax, you know, and so I paid it, filled out my exact form and around, roughly around that same time, they took me to court. They first came, that they sent the road commission after me, so my driveway was too wide, and it was agricultural property at the time, they wanted me to switch over to commercial, and they would leave me alone, and next thing I know, it was just one thing after another, and then they wanted fence up, full up lane, this, that, another, and then they, like I said, they pretty much took me to court and said if I didn't have this stuff done, I couldn't run my business, you had to get out of here. And so at that point, you know, I moved on my equipment and was gone. And they threatened signing me per day, and so that was the reason that I kind of went, you know, compliance to personal property taxes.
Right, I expected Johnson dog, I was still there. So we have it in here, is it proposed, what this, that isn't for seven days a week, or five days?
And I, I did see on there when Lawrence filled out, I believe that form, it really wrote one sixty by fifty, or by sixty by one sixty, it was up on there.
What, sixty by sixty by--
It says one fifty, a sixty by one fifty.
Yeah, that would get you the--
Nine thousand. Yeah. I seen that on there last night, I was reading through it, he didn't send it to me until like seven o'clock yesterday evening, so I just briefly went through it, but that was one thing I did see.
Do we have any questions for Dale?
I don't think it makes any difference whether it's five days or seven days.
It does, I just, so it's on there.
Do they ask what days of operation?
Okay, if he says seven days a week--
Facing so much work.
Yeah.
If he's busy, we got a storm like that again.
I just put it on there so that way--
Yeah. But on average day, on this Monday to Friday, you know, and I have weekends for some kids, I've got three little ones.
There is a sample motion, and straight forward, we have to acknowledge the changes on the thing from one sixty by, to one fifty, to one fifty by sixty. Can we just make--
No, this is going to be sixty by one fifty, right?
Yes, you have the form that was actually submitted, as you were saying, we adjust on--
Okay, so this, yeah, so it was submitted as ninety nine ten.
That's surface elevation, isn't it, or building finished--
That is elevation.
The build in the center.
Yeah, so it says one fifty by sixty. Fifty by sixty on the plant, so that is--
Yeah, so playing this one, okay, so we just, we don't need to--
Okay. Doctors, we just making note that it, that is--
I just wanted to mention it now, I didn't know if anybody covered it, but I just--
That's what you mentioned, then my math's kicked in, and I was able to do that without taking socks and shoes off, so.
Did I fail Jim before?
Anybody likes making motions? Make a motion to approve SPR twenty four dash one eight with a small change correction in the proposal form, the building measurements are one fifty, hundred fifty feet by sixty feet by eighteen feet. And stated that this week, but seven days is approved also. Thank you. Support? Take your little call. Dave, yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Casey? Kevin?
All right, thank you. Now, one more question, I still need, do I need architectural drawing still then?
So I believe these may possibly satisfy the requirements of building inspector.
Okay, that's something I need to bring up to Dale.
Yeah, so it looks like non-stamping, so, um, yeah, so when you, you apply--
So these are the drawings, these are the drawings?
Non-stamping, okay.
Yes, so I can just pass these over to Troy and I'll take a look.
All right.
Tell them you apply for your buildings, otherwise just let them know that I have plans.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. Guys, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
See you later. Guys, have a good evening, sorry about you guys here, it looks like I'm the only one who brought it together, huh? That's all right. All right, well, you guys don't work smart. All right, see you later.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have election of officers. May you offer before, if anyone is interested in-- Kevin said, he said, oh, you say yep? Couldn't tell.
You do an axel.
The cataracts are acting up, I couldn't really see there.
It's the semi-retirement thing?
Is there anyone interested? Casey had said before you were interested?
I think I'll start at a lower level first.
I have no qualms if we keep it the way it is, but if someone is interested, I guess I have no problems with that. So, like I said, we can shuffle and-- I think in the spirit of the new administration of cooperating with our style, we remain the same. I think, we'll do, we have to do one at a time, so if you want to follow with our format here, the sample motion. Give you guys one last chance. Dear person, it's easy game.
I don't mean, let me take it off camera.
It's very difficult. Bang a gamble, it's kind of fun. I'd like to see you maintain position. You make us a motion? So we need to read this and tell them like-- It's a sample.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. David Legg as chairperson.
Support.
Mr. Jesse McCormick is vice president, vice chairperson.
Oh, we didn't move off separate.
We did it separate or as one?
That I don't support yet, because I don't even know what he said.
Jesse had mentioned he may be interested in, I'd like somebody else to take that, I've been something for a long, long time. So we have that as an opportunity, someone who's interested in--
I, I, I think I might try that.
Okay.
Jesse seems to handle it well, and I've, I've watched him all these years.
Like twice. In the case that something were happening, I weren't to be here, that's the one that you just slide into the chair and interrupt me, that's the-- Now I'm retired, so, well, I have no disruptions unless the grandkids come, then I make no problems. Throw one way around. I'll make a motion that, make a motion to appoint Casey as vice chairperson. Support. We have secretary. Except, big interest in, anybody?
I'll make a motion to appoint Todd Howland to as secretary.
Support, all right. We have-- Need to read it all together, or just with this point?
So it looks like we have three motions.
Right.
All at the same time.
Yeah.
I vote.
Okay.
I think we could either vote on, we can all, or vote on each of the motions.
Okay.
Individually, or we can draw and then do one, or if you'd like to do it.
You guys think, do we notice one?
Yeah.
One and done, okay?
Yep.
I will, I think that is our motion, that will be for yourself as the chairperson, Casey as the vice chair, and Todd as secretary. Your roll call. Can I, do you vote for yourself?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see why not.
I don't trust myself sometimes, but I will go ahead with that. Jesse?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, next we have Casey for vice chair, are we, yeah, we're doing them individually, okay, Casey for vice chair.
We just combined them all together, yeah, Kevin made them all for--
Yeah, you didn't call it together, Kevin.
Yes.
So, okay, so we're good, okay. All right, next we have discussion item for Lakewood additions to the sub area plan. Sure you have a story for us on this one?
So, essentially, we are selling off larger portions of the Lakewood additions, which were all given to the township in the nineteen eighties, they were largely untouched prior to twenty twenty one. My understanding is that the township was hesitant to sell anything. And that's after, after twenty twenty one, we began selling more, more of that township property. That's very unique, and that was planted a hundred years ago for the purposes of basically a giveaway with a newspaper subscription. So you'd get your recreational property, two twenty five by one hundred lots, you'd throw a tent on the lots, you could build a cabin, whatever, whatever you find. Come up to West Michigan for a week in the summer. Primarily as a Chicago play, playground. Over the next hundred years, eventually, a lot of use for that. Lakewood Club developed. And then the areas surrounding Lakewood Club, some have developed into housing, others have just remained vacant. Big pieces of land that township owns interspersed with some very small pieces of property that are fairly developable. There'd be some challenges to private individuals that want to develop some of the lands that are deep inside those areas. They're not serviced by utilities or roads, so they would have to build a road or driveway. As we've been selling them, it's been difficult to facilitate, you know, driveways and roads. At what point do you need a road to go through there, and can we allow a driveway to go through? If we wanted a private road to go through, the minimum by the ordinance requirements is sixty six feet wide. Those roads are platted east and west at forty feet wide, and north and south at twenty five feet wide. I believe there is a way we could make that work. As it's platted, there's also ways that we can allow people to replat those and develop them, or even, you know, buy large swaths of land for private recreation, and also maybe dedicate some for public recreation. The Parks Committee is looking at maybe, you know, seeing what they would like to do with some of it. I think if we're going to continue selling the land and using, if we want to utilize the land in the future, I think instead of doing nothing with it, as has been the course of action, we do need a plan. Just to facilitate how people are using it and essentially allow them to use it in a way that is beneficial to them and the community at large.
About all the little scattered privately owned lots that are in there.
Yeah, that would be something that the plan could address, where we could have public input on that.
Because there's a lot of like chunks, the township owns, maybe the IR owns a little piece here and there, but there's a lot of--
Yeah.
Those twenty five by one hundred lots, they're just kind of scattered everywhere that people own still.
You can find them at--
I'm drawing lots around.
Is that currently--
Awesome.
Majority of it is zone R one.
Somewhere here.
Almost one acre.
It's--
It's--
South of--
If you're trying to develop it and have platted, you're going to spend eight hundred with--
It's all of the--
You know, three to eight acres, not a lot. You're not going to be able to efficiently plot it out for homes, because you're going to have two in a block. But if it's--
Two.
And if you're a developer building, that's not, that's profitable.
Right.
It may not even cover the cost of the road.
So it's just that one all the way across here, all this.
It's a lot more than two hundred. R two is--
What's this?
Some--
Lot less restrictive.
Yeah, R two is a little less restrictive, but it's still one acre, if not connected, so water is super-- Uh, the RM district?
So it's all broken up, it's--
Someone else, the RM district?
You look forward to her six acres.
And that's twenty thousand square feet.
And that'd be so--
That's geared more towards manufacturing.
All of this, maybe, or maybe not all of it, but close to it.
Mm-hmm.
I guess.
That chunk of leather in the sky. Yes, that and there too, that is, and that is another, uh--
So that's--
Another reason we need it, because that is part of the Lakewood additions plan area. And the plan currently calls for sparsely populated developments.
Saw that, like yellow all the way over, I mean, all of that.
But it, I think it would be hard to justify that as sparsely developed residences. Um, then if he'd wanted, like, you were just--
Yeah, because he'd want to like change the roads or kind of, yeah, kind of like, yeah, because he would like to do a P U D.
So it's broken up.
The average result, so that could--
It's kind of a big--
His plan. And, you know, we should have a plan to justify part of the zoning, of zoning decision.
Everybody people are--
But I think it would just, it would strengthen that possibility and, and it's like, um, yeah, it's, you know, developed planning, that's-- That is unofficial, unofficial pin, I mean, I guess, and other people, they, they just--
It's--
Front side and back side, you know. Yeah. Yeah, and that's where we could, or through that unique situation, take inventory of everything that's owned by the township.
When you say replat it, you're certain, or I mean, like replating like one acre parcels or something?
That would be, my initial thought is that if an individual wants to replat it, they could replat it, but the township, it might not be in the township's best interest to go through the expense of replating it. But just leaving that open as an option for-- For people to replat it.
Enough for a one acre to build on it. Is that what we would do, set a minimum for, for building, dwelling on it, is that kind of what you're thinking they could buy?
That'd be kind of a plan, like, you know, in this area, the current plan with the zoning says these zonings should have, you know, one or two houses per acre. And these areas should have more acreage, these areas should have less, so that's kind of--
A mix.
Yeah, that's kind of what what we'd be shooting for there with, is what, what density of development is appropriate, given the water table and the availability of the resources.
So township's got a lot more, a lot of property, you, you're not stipulating, or we're not discussing a certain size of acreage at this point.
No, at this point, it's basically, um, just deciding to go through, basically acknowledging that we need.
Yeah.
The time for this plan is now, we've been kicking it down the road. And it's been a low priority, because we've just been holding on to the property and have anticipated that it's not be developed. But that's not-- That's not a current--
Yeah.
That's a priority right now.
Would replating it to include larger lots, larger acreage, offer the township more value when they're eventually purchased?
It could be, uh, it could be more beneficial if we were to replat it and then sell it. And that would be something that the plan could look at and should look at.
Yeah.
Is, is that a viable option, or should that be left to the developers to platten?
Probably what the market wants is something--
And this would involve, you know, it'd be a comprehensive--
Accessory building oriented, some wooded lot or wooded property under, and all that. Twenty five by a hundred is basically worth, right, to build a lot, so--
Correct, you can't build--
Given, yeah. Given, yeah.
It's, sixty by one hundred is doable, but only with, only if the health department says you can, which I, I doubt they would.
The intention of putting two hundred and forty.
That would be at least Leatherman Builders bought that.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Say that again.
Uh, Leatherman Builders.
So some of it has been sold?
Correct, I believe it's about.
Okay.
One hundred to two hundred acres.
Okay.
In order to do that, we would have to change the classification.
They would need a planned unit development.
Yeah.
And in order to, I believe the best justification for a P U D there for what he wants is going to be to, um, have a plan that would allow for that type of development.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, it'd be very useful land, I think. I mean, it's all useful land, I mean, it's, you know, it's just north of where we're at, I mean, it's all good.
Right.
Higher ground, you know, it's not high water table and that's. You know, it's a good area to buy lots.
Somebody in there with.
A lot of little lots that are privately owned, I don't know if.
Yeah.
Anybody can ever get through those without. It's a huffed baby, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. That would be the township is starting to purchase those lots from the county when they come up for tax sales?
Yeah.
I could see a team or a committee of, uh, people with development expertise, uh, and real estate expertise figuring out on behalf of the township, what would offer the township, you know, the best value deal, you know, what does the market want, what size, how do you make it all work? It's a great idea, I don't know that I have any of the skills to say recommend these, we should. But obviously it should be replatted, I think. I think.
I think you would've logically thinking would have had kind of a plan first before you purchased a big chunk of property like that, but.
Just.
Well, so would we wait for them to come in and ask for reclassification so that we would be able to say, this is my, you know, if they were gonna do P U D, would we need to then say we want to reclassify that as what would allow that to be done and, and they would give us the plan for it, how many units and?
Um, so we would say that essentially we would be starting on this
Yeah.
in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
As a priority and they can, um, well, obviously we'd be working with them, um, like they'd be involved in the outreach as what.
Yeah.
What kind of planning and landings they're intending for and we'd evaluate that.
You see this being them coming, coming to you and then saying, here's the plan and, and you would bring it to us as a, as a potential plan?
Be sure of this, but.
No, no.
I see it as more as how the, the township would kind of look at the land and see what it can support. And work with people who are, you know, in the community. Developers, property owners within that area and adjacent to it. Some people who are stakeholders and taxpayers and seeing, you know, seeing what they, you know, what they think the land should be used for, how they, you know, how they feel about it. Um, gathering all that input and then um, kind of doing an inventory of what we have, you know, the elevations, the land type, is it, is it wetland, is it dry? Um, housing suitability, septic suitability. And just saying these areas can support this type of development, but we're going to allow this type of development. And then this, you know, this area is wetlands, it can't support any development, maybe the township holds onto that or it's sold for, you know, for private development or for, you know, private recreational use or public recreational use. With that kind of thing and then, um, just kind of, that's working with the developer and saying, you know, this is what we think will work here, what are your thoughts? And other developers who might be interested in township property, um, just to see what, you know, to make sure that our planning is consistent with market and it's not hindering things. But also kind of walking that line between this is what the land can support and this is what, um, you know, this is what the market's demanding right now and will be demanding in the future.
It seems like it'd be logical if the township, uh, established some boundaries, guidelines, uh, preliminary plans. Then the developers may come and understand, well, okay, if that's the case, then these are the options I could bring to the township. If, if we sit around and wait for developers to come and say, well, here you have some property available, what about this and that? And that could go on forever, you know, we haven't done anything to make it shovel ready or anywhere near shovel ready.
Yeah.
And it would just take, it seems like it would take a long time, there'd be so many little
Yeah.
Negotiation things.
And that could be in the plan as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is something you're looking at, just discussion so that we can kind of get an idea of what we're looking at.
Yeah, it's basically just to get the ball rolling.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no doubt there's some demand.
At the, um. Getting a recommendation to township board, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, getting, maybe township board in, um, onboard and then of Parks and Recreation as well. Um, they would be, um, if they're looking at having some of that public land for recreational use, um.
Right.
You know, we'd have to all work together to see, you know, what.
Is, would this be in the, excuse me for interrupting, would this be in the, um, this, uh, the school system here? Reese Puffer or would this be?
Whitehall.
Whitehall.
Much of it is whitehall.
Okay, that's.
There are portions that are.
That's interesting, yeah.
Who was it? No. I think he was more speaking on the lack of rental houses, but Mark.
Yes.
He threw out a figure of how much were, there's a deficit of housing, but.
Yes.
I don't know if that was relative with it being specifically about rentals.
Yeah, so.
Obviously it's needed.
Yeah, so there was a housing study done in two thousand, uh, twenty three by the Community Foundation, they sponsored it. And they noted that by twenty twenty seven, we will need in the county, I believe it's about thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred rental units and about thirty five hundred owner occupant units.
Yeah.
Just to meet that sustained demand.
That's in township.
That's throughout Muskegon County. So I would imagine, you know, the core cities and areas are going to be doing a bulk of that. But more of that demand is also going to be extending out into Dalton and a fruit land in Adelston and some of the further out communities as well.
You know, it would be good to, uh, uh, understand if we have this discussion at our next meeting is a map of give us some boundaries and the overall acreage that's in question and.
Yeah.
Can, can these be combined? Like.
Can't combine.
Through like normal, so the guy who bought all these, can he just combine them all?
Um, sometimes you can. Um, it depends on your purpose, if you're just gonna split them up later.
Oh, okay.
He's gonna want to do that, cause, um, a lot of times people buy these, they work through non-conformities, cause it's currently one acre minimum.
Mm hmm.
But if they want less than an acre, they have to work through work through non-conformities and, um.
But it makes, can the township combine theirs? Do they?
Yes.
Okay, how, what percentage of this remaining do you think the township still owns?
It's still a large portion.
Okay.
I would guess five hundred.
And that combining your parcels doesn't require any court action or anything like that, right?
Um, so it's just, um, just administrative.
Okay.
Finding them.
Would it help if the township combined a few here and a few there?
It, it might.
Okay.
But.
It's hard to tell with.
Yeah, but we'd still need to do, um, you know, full inventory.
Right, cause there's, yeah.
You know, detail, I don't know, what are we looking at?
So in the case of the big section that was sold to Leatherman Builders, we can say we're open to what rezoning maybe to R two if need be, to pull off X, Y, Z, but you have to come to us with all of the normalities being met with something needs and wells and.
Yeah, potentially.
I mean, that probably makes sense and sound.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'd essentially just be assigning densities. And it's kind of laying out.
Yeah, some real opportunities.
Certain areas, um, basically not Parks and Recreation, it's like, you know, all this, um, there is a plan, um, and we can work that out.
So is that something you would like to add in the future for a, a meeting topic and?
Yeah, so that's something I'd like to add in the future, maybe, um, I think that is a recommendation to township board to be in the planning process. There's a specific, um, specific process that needs to be followed.
Doesn't the, uh, the question trail take up a large sum of the?
Yes, I believe that's a couple hundred acres. I don't believe that was included in the plan area, the master plan. That could be expanded since we're going to the, um, the planning process, it could be expanded to cover the horse trail, but, um, since that's already an established use, it's not entirely necessary.
How does, how does, I'm just curious, like Leatherman, how's he currently like, is he just currently using just bigger parcels that he was, that he was building at or was he just?
Yes, he has parcels that were prepared, um, about twenty years ago.
Mm hmm.
So there's smaller parcels that were established and they're now lawfully non-conforming, they're about three quarters of an acre on average.
Yeah, so that's something he did a lot of, watched and go get that set up.
Correct.
At first bought that.
Bought that.
Or whatever you're doing there.
Yeah, and he bought that already set up.
Or was it?
It's up in Lakewood Club, so I mean, he's still built his.
Automobile and Lakewood.
Gotcha.
Um, where all the new houses are going in.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, I think it's a good use of the land, it's already make, not reading any texts, I was in a township bones, it's like.
Yeah, so.
Square, square, no, hey.
Yeah, it's just good.
Oh, what the heck, that news thing, let's, yeah, anyway, like, that's, what's the long term for all of that?
Geez Louise.
Here, here's your twenty bucks.
Thanks for subscribing to the paper.
Thanks for the paper money. Good luck with your.
Yeah, it's mainly the sketch, because all the, how all the ones are flat and everything.
Yeah.
You know, it's a little individually owned scattered lots.
Yeah, they, some of them don't even look like they're twenty five by a hundred, they're just a little tiny section that somebody owns right in the middle of a parcel or something, it's really great.
Yeah.
You, you know, like, uh, would you say something about, um, circuit board or something for replating? Is there, you know, like, is there expense for that or just, I mean, there is for paperwork and some sort of.
Yeah, there'd be filing fees and lawyer fees. Um, I believe lawyer, attorney fees would be the bulk of the matter.
I mean, that might be with register, to whatever, to get it. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, if this is done properly, it's gonna really be a nice tax source for the township, you know, property taxes, nicer homes, bigger lots, whole barns, twenty five hundred square foot, two and a half garage.
Or.
Nice street. Could be bill billy eight.
I wasn't gonna say that. We are, yeah.
Most, most of these roads aren't made, right, correct?
Right.
There's, there's a surplus.
Yeah.
Which.
And that's what the township would like to make work, why they didn't sell anything, cause I realistically, if it's a continual. If you take a forty foot side. Yes, but what's, what's the need?
No.
Power lines.
Depends on.
So, you know, but, you know, the ordinance probably doesn't allow that as a width.
Yeah.
Access, so, so right away, that's kind of out the door.
Yeah.
And then. The other thing, pretty sizable.
It's a nice area, but.
Sizable development or whatever, I mean, silverstone, but, you know, they won't put power lines, invoice weights anymore. That's a, there's nothing to see there. But then with, you know, but you, we have those forty by twenty five roads, you can't physically build a road and, and I shouldn't say you can't build it, you can build it, but it's not. A corner is not, you can't make a corner.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? They're not big enough to even be usable.
Yeah, it would work great in urban.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the closest thing.
They need to soak it, water and sewer is whitehall.
Close.
Because it would be, I believe that's at the bike trails somewhere, I'm not sure where water would be.
Straight.
Yeah.
It's.
That is time, so.
Well, that'd be a long, long way to go.
There once, I know something, somebody, yeah, it's, I don't know that.
So it doesn't look like the bike trail touches this.
I don't know, the fees.
Almost from you.
I'm assuming. Pay for, pay for the cost. Pay for the cost of maintenance.
Would this be like putting together like a E C C plan, that imposing that to the, the board or would this be the board giving us?
I don't understand. So, you know, roll here, so we would just recommend that the board, making a priority.
Might need to go. Get built.
Correct. To come up with a plan.
Okay.
And then, um, there's potentially direct. Come up with a plan.
It should expire.
And then we'd begin the planning process where we send out notices and, um, have some public hearings and board sessions to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of look at everything.
But you, you're just, this, this is just discussion, then you're gonna work that into, coming to Joe's and?
Yes.
Okay.
First.
Okay, it's something that we can, you know, spread it out, make it kind of easy and not not rushed, intensive, where we're at a long, more than half hour meetings that
Right.
Don't accomplish anything.
I guess the other thing to think about, maybe, um, but the way the situation is at land right now with the, with the, uh, roads, the way they're planted, low scattered individual lots and all that stuff, um, you know, like the piece of Leatherman built, for example, or bought, I guess, you know, he's probably gonna get that replanted, I would assume. Um, I don't know, but the township doesn't take at least some of it or a portion of it and have it replanted, maybe five or ten or twenty acre parcels or something, um, you know, to get rid of all the little roads and get those little parcels, five parcels cleaned up and whatnot. Me, it's almost all gonna be just strictly geared towards a developer, which I'm not saying there's any wrong with that, I'm saying to consider that some, that, you know, the whole, which is maybe not a bad thing, but that, you know, it's all gonna be, you know, bare minimum. Be quarter acre, one, one acre lots, I guess, is required, not one, right? So I mean, it's just gonna be all bare minimum of that, basically. Essentially, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but it kind of takes out individuals, I guess, that might want to have a little larger parcel, you know, to where you have, uh, a mix in the township, maybe.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I think a mix is.
Because of individuals, there is, you know, and then if it's not, you know, right now it's so broke up, it's a two and a half acre parcel. If it's not, you know, right now it's so broke up, it's some two and a half acre parcels, these platted roads, I can see that just getting hodgepodge real fast. You know, so that's just something, an angle, I guess, I'm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm thinking of that maybe the township wants to do some of that.
Instead of that, instead of.
To make it available for waiting for developer to develop it, although somebody can just buy it. Five acres.
That's that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Start, yeah.
Put stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz she had start, it's gonna be affordable housing, not your custom homes, it's gonna be the cookie cutter.
Right, which maybe, I mean, I'm not saying anything wrong with that, I mean, it's definitely needed.
Yeah. Yes, cuz the houses he currently builds are about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand. That's probably gonna be the ballpark range.
Right. Yeah.
For that development. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is pretty crazy right now.
Alright, can we?
I was like.
Hear that?
Me, I.
But.
Really.
Go on, start with that.
Okay, so.
Okay, alright.
And let's go ahead and move on to our next, the planning and zoning goals for twenty twenty five, is there anything? Is anyone that needs, would like to send something forward to the board? We can request them to review certain things, would this be something we'd have them review?
Like, so you could have that as a uh as a recommendation.
We could ask them to do the Lakewood additions, sub area plan?
Yes.
Okay. We need actually make that as a motion?
I don't think you need to.
We just need a listing.
It'd just be nice to have on the record.
Okay. Alright, then we'll, everyone agree to have them, look at that now, okay, so we'll have the. Lakewood additions, sub area plan, have the board look at that as ideas and. Plan that. Options for us to take and move forward with. Anything else you can think of?
Types of stuff do we want to, that normally is the board recommending we look at stuff, so what types of stuff do we recommend they look at?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so like the master plan. Is anything? Any, any issues you see with land development policies as they are? Maybe any, any ordinances that um you guys would like to uphold this next year or um?
I'd like to change the motorsports one, so they don't have to go, that the planning commission is just buying a say. I don't want, I don't like one certain subset in the township, like they. This, we hear theirs and then they go to the board, so they have to make it through fourteen people, the other people will make it through seven and if they don't like that, they have to go to Circuit Court. Like, I just, I don't see, so if you own a gas station, you have to go to Circuit Court, if you don't, like, planning commission, if you own a motorsport park, you go to the township board, I just. I don't, I don't, I understand maybe why they did that to begin with, but I don't think it's necessary, I. I feel like that's a business that the planning commission is well suited to here and can handle their stuff, so just make, maybe make that more in line with everyone else. All the other businesses. Cuz that's really the only thing about their ordinance that's different, is that it requires approval from two boards. All the other stuff in there is, there's like, this is, they have a bunch of sections of what they have to do too.
Anything else for you? Kevin, you think you had something further to add there?
Oh, I know.
How long, no.
Empty bowl.
How long they voted to do this, redo the sign ordinance?
That was twenty twenty one.
Is it still pretty restrictive? I was just really surprised last time when Brooklyn Bagels, like, they just have a big circle and that's too big. I was really surprised, you see other areas have just massive signs and like lighted signs and.
Yeah, I think it's. It's not the most restrictive, but it's also not the most allowing. And there are ways that I'd. I would address, address it differently, whereas, you know, maybe give an option to have a smaller sign up by the street in exchange for more signage on the building.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of better provisions for like multi-tenant buildings.
Yeah.
Um. I'm more of a fan of the percentage.
We've, we've loosened it up once or twice.
Yeah, I felt what you said, I just.
It's.
Think we might not be quite there yet.
Yeah, so if you took ninety six per foot. Um maximum, you know, might work for. Donalds or. Like an Arby's, but Family Farm at home or even a Meyer, that wouldn't, wouldn't be desirable for them. Um for the larger stores in.
Right, cuz it it ends up like.
Yeah, ninety sixty six per, ninety six square foot sign is two percent of their wall front edge.
Correct, yeah, a a proportion makes a lot more sense.
And they have multiple signs, whereas they'd only be allowed one per front edge instead of their, you know, home and fresh and.
And you go like.
No signs.
There's a necessity for a large sign for a place like that, and then you go to the corner of Strand in Brooklyn. You go to pull off Strand, and then there's an economy on a park sign that you gotta pull up to look around, you go get people.
So I I wouldn't be allowed now, but it's been.
I know, it's like a hole and a sign, you're like this, and then we, or they, Baker Place can't put up a sign. And so stuff like that. So for grandfather sign.
Yeah.
Anything else anyone has or any concerns?
It's just. We were talking about the Leatherman thing and the Lakewood stuff, let's not hold him up for what he just bought, is it really? I might need to get that insured or.
That's what I said, usually.
I mean, it's workable for now, but in the long run, could be beneficial to have it. It's something.
It's very, kind of, he has a little chunk of property and we had to like redo all of that thing to get him back into it, all that stuff and.
Yeah, realistically, it has. You know, he still has a lot of properties to develop. Differently. And he also has to pursue private lands and within that chunk. Okay, I had this. And we. If that, that large chunk of land sold, I was like, okay, that's, you know, that's nice, we can. It's workable, but then, you know, somebody else requested forty acres. Um. For, I think it was like for private one house, and then the Parks and Recreation Committee wanted to look at using it. So the board decided to kind of hold off for the Parks and Rec to look at property. And that's when I thought, well.
Yeah.
We should really consider having a plan in place, if we're gonna keep some of our large swaths of land, which I think is a good thing. We just need to be able to know what we're doing and be able to allow them to do things with it.
Has Parks and Rec occupied the stuff that they already.
Yeah.
Are using instead of.
Right.
More. That we end up maintaining and. That's just by.
Let the developer put in walking trails, bike trails.
Time walk.
Roads.
Yeah.
First. Good point.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so you're the chair.
It's step two.
It's every bar, that's a little. We need to make a formal launch that has Lakewood business plan, right? And you know, which was hard to come. Want to go to that.
Say it out there. It's, it's not necessary, but. It is just a matter of having it on the record, so if I, you know, when I put it in the report, it's kind of more justifiable.
On lots.
I don't think anyone's gonna care. This way people are just saying, oh, Steve's making stuff up and throwing it in their report.
I think Jesse's idea is the right one, you have a mixed use, a mixed size of lots and. You know, give. Give the buyer what they want, but service a broad. Range of situations.
I just, just to maybe take a look at the motorsports, the sign ordinance, just in in the late conditions, just look, just have a discussion about it, that's all. So, I don't know, I made a motion that the twenty twenty four annual planning commission report recommended the township board um. Move to action on doing something with the Lakewood additions, to coming up with a plan for Lakewood additions. And having a discussion about the motorsports ordinance and the sign ordinance.
Motion by Casey and support by Kevin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. That takes us through our last item on there, we are now to item ten, which is German.
If a motion to adjourn.
For. That multiple sports on there. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. End the meeting at seven o'clock. It's a Christmas party here Thursday, June, Stephen.
Yes.
Yeah.
If if someone said that Dalton Township was.